Very warm good afternoon, one and all. We have gathered here as a part of the eighth international conference on recent trends in human rights and changing facets of religious freedom, organized by Kerala Law Academy Law College in association with the Centre for Advanced Legal Studies and Research. It's my privilege to invite our honorable resource persons, Konrad O M Connerius Sir, researcher and assistant lecturer in Environment Law, Faculty of Law, University of Indonesia. Maria Muniz Pinto de Carvello Matos Ma, lawyer of Federal University of Bahia and president of Federal University of Bahia's Human Rights Clinic, Brazil. And Dr. Anishwari Pillai Sir, Assistant Professor, School of Legal Studies, KUSSAT. First of all, I'm related to invite Mr. Konrad O M Connerius Sir. He's a researcher and assistant lecturer in Environment Law at the Faculty of Law, University as Indonesia. More specifically, Sir had a specialization in the area of climate change law and particularly in climate change litigation. The nature of his scholarly interests in environment law intersects with political philosophy and legal theory. Some of his writings have been published as a book chapter about climate change litigation and climate justice. And an article journal, Law and Economics of Reclamation Bonding Mechanisms. Welcome to the special session, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to invite Ms. Maria Muniz Pinto de Carvello Matos Ma. She is a Brazilian lawyer and holds a law degree at Federal University of Bahia, Brazil. With the term of academic mobility at the University of Porto, Portugal. Maria Muniz is currently president of Federal University of Bahia's Human Rights Clinic, as well as researcher at the Centre for Studies and Research International Law at the State University of Rio de Janeiro and at the International Centre for Human Rights of Sao Paulo at the Academic Policia de Direito. Marina Muniz has acted as amicus curi before the Inter-American Court of Human Rights on four occasions, with an emphasis on the case of workers of the fireworks factory in Santo Antônio de Jesus and their families versus Brazil. Welcome, ma'am.
Good afternoon, thank you very much.
Lastly, I call upon Dr. Anishwari Pillai, who is an assistant professor in School of Legal Studies, KUSSAT, Kerala. Prior to joining SLS, he has worked as a faculty of law in Hidayatullah National Law University, Rai Pup, Sathiskar. He has been awarded PhD from KUSSAT. He has also qualified the state eligibility test for law in 2013. He is also serving the position of visiting professor at Department of Law, Dakha International University, Bangladesh. He has been awarded the prestigious Distinguished Young Faculty Award 2017-18 from Cochin University of Science and Technology. He is recipient of prestigious Professor Dr. A.T. Marcos Memorial Golden Medal from KUSSAT for securing first rank in alum and also the winner of KC Menon Memorial Golden Medal for the best student in the year of 2008 from KUSSAT. Sir, I welcome you on behalf of everyone to this special session.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Sorry, sir, I thought you were in the meeting.
I am here, I am here.
Now, I'd like to welcome all the participants to our session, welcome all. Let's move on to the special session. Now, I'd like to invite our participants to the interaction session.
So, let me thank Konrad O and Marina for joining with us. So, friends, today in this session, we will be discussing about religious freedoms. As we all know, religious freedom is how important. Because most of the countries, we are hearing news from across the globe, we are hearing news from different countries regarding how the government and some political parties suppressing the religious rights of a common man. So, in this context, this particular special session will address to what extent religious freedom existing and what are the legislative framework in Indonesia, Brazil and Ethiopia. So, we will try to ask speakers, we all will try to make a comparative study of these three countries and how far the religious freedom existing in these three countries. So, starting with Konrad O, I would like to welcome, sir, please make your presentation regarding Indonesian framework on religious freedom.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Pillai. So, well, I'm very excited about this webinar. So, well, actually, this is the closest thing I've been to India. So, I've been wanted to visit the country for quite some time. Well, apparently, I'm also an Indian, so my father is a Tamil. He, I'm not so sure. So, my grandfather originated from a place called Goa. Well, I'm not really sure about the accuracy of that. So, well, I've never been to India, so this is the closest thing I have to India. So, that is particularly exciting to me. Okay, so I'll just start with my presentation about the Indonesian context. Let me share my screen. So, based on the theme of today's session is about religious freedom. So, I'm going to talk about the Indonesian context and what's the issue about law and religious freedom in Indonesia. So, before I proceed further, so these are some of the basic facts. So, Indonesia is home to one of the largest Muslim population in the world. So, well, it's the majority religion in Indonesia. So, of course, in many aspects, there are influences from the, there are some Islamic influences in many sectors. Although we do not particularly say that we are an Islamic country or something of that sort, we rather have a sort of state ideology called Pancasila. I guess this is, well, today, Indonesia is perhaps the only country with an official state ideology. So, Pancasila means, Panca means Lima, Sila means, how do I say, principles or fundamentals or grounds. It's actually from Sanskrit. I don't know if this is true or not, because perhaps Dr. Pillai can clarify me on that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, this same terminology we are also using, Pancasila.
Okay, so it's from Sanskrit, to the best of my knowledge. So, that's that. So, Pancasila has five principles. The first is the belief in God. Second is democracy and so on and so forth. So, what is particularly interesting to highlight is, in this context, is actually the first principle, that is the belief in God. And this has been translated in many policies, one of which is when someone is trying to register for a national ID, that is KTP, Kartu Tanda Penuduk, there's a religion column that one must fill in. Only until recently that this obligation was revoked. So, today, oh, sorry, before that, it's also interesting to highlight that Indonesia officially acknowledges six kinds of religion as, how do I say, as a proper religion perhaps in the minds of the legislators, that is Islam and then Christian Protestant, Christian Catholic, Hindu Buddhist and Confucius. And with the recent revocation of the obligation to indicate one's religious affiliation, now, if your faith, your religious faith does not fall into this six categories of religion, then you can put it just in blank. But while it is a progress, it is still a problem nevertheless. I'll address it, I'll address this issue further in my presentation. So, we do have, like many multicultural countries, we do have religious conflicts and some and some inhibition in trying to freely practice one's faith. So, while there are many forms of conflicts amongst religious sects, some of the most noteworthy and highlighted cases are conflicts between Islamic groups and Christian groups. So, I guess part of the thing about this is also relates to the fact that both of these religions, Islam and Christianity is a messiology and evangelical religion. That is, it's this kind of religion is trying to spread the faith and try to convert as much people as possible. It's quite different with other religions, the theology of other religions that is less evangelical in its approach. So, I guess part of the problem is that because each of them are trying to convert each other. So, in that sense, some conflicts are just unavoidable. And these conflicts have never been completely resolved. They escalate and deescalate momentarily and also appear and resurfaces again at some point in time. And there is also a historical background to this. So, when the founding fathers of Indonesia was trying to devise via the state's constitution, there was this question amongst them. So, there was this discussion amongst them, that is the question of, under what principles should we, should we guide this newly born state? So, that was a question, that question was central because Indonesia is comprised of many ethnical groups, ethnic groups and also comprised of many religions, also including native religion. So, native religions, well, ethnical, it's the cultural, it's the original cultural products of the Indonesian natives. So, it's different from Islam, it's different from Christianity, it's different from Hindu, it's different from Buddha. And also, there are also some forms of, let's say, assimilated religions. So, for example, we have a different form of Hindu in Indonesia, particularly in Bali. So, we have this Balinese Hindu. So, it's, well, it's pretty much like the Hindu in India, but it has some local features to it. So, that's that. Now, although in principle, the Indonesian constitution provides that everyone can practice their faith freely. However, when the constitution is further regulated in the implementing regulations, then there are some technical regulations, for example, obtaining license for building a house of worship and so on and so forth. Part of the requirement to build a house of worship is the approval of neighboring communities. And that may prove to be difficult if a particular group is the religious minority compared to the religious majority in that given community. So, in many cases, they do have the, well, eventually, they just simply build the house of worship without license. And oftentimes, they are vulnerable to sudden inspection and being relocated and so on and so forth. So, that is somewhat the problem of religious, that's part of the problem of religious conflicts and religious freedom in Indonesia. Now, another thing about religion and the relationship between religion and law in Indonesia is that Indonesia does not have a non-establishment clause. So, unlike countries like the United States saying that public funds cannot be used to fund religious-based programs, there isn't such a thing in Indonesia. In fact, in some cases, even the government promotes religious-based programs. For example, there is this scholarship from governments to different groups of people. And one of the groups of people is Santri. Santri is, Santri is a people who went to some religious schools. They're not particularly taking bachelors of divinity or something like that. So, there is this sort of like, how do I say it? So, it's like a Pasantren. I'm not really sure if you can understand me correctly. So, these are like a semi-formal school. So, they teach day-to-day subjects like mathematics, physics, sociology, religion, economics and so on and so forth. But the place of education is rather exclusively for Muslim groups of people. So, there is a scholarship for this segment of people in Indonesia and that is supported by the government. But in that context, the support comes from the Ministry of Education. And we also have a Ministry of Religion. Perhaps this is the, this is a practice that one can only find in Indonesia and not elsewhere. And although the name is Ministry of Religion, the day-to-day operation focuses more on, on, well, promoting and managing affairs that has some bearing to Islam, like from Zakat management also to managing the Hajj quota. So, but when, because Indonesia is, well, has a large majority of Islamic population when going for a Hajj, Umroh to Makah, that is, that proves to be a sort of logistic problem. So, the Ministry of Religion handles this kind of things. And another thing is also Indonesia has a pluralistic legal system. So, we have national laws that applies to all and then there's also Adat Law and Islamic Law. Adat Law is, it's the law developed by the native, by the Indonesian natives. This is mostly relevant in rural areas. So, for example, people like me who lives in the urban and perhaps in a large metropolitan, we are quite detached from adult law affairs. This is only relevant for rural areas. And this only governs family and private law matters. The same goes with Islam. So, it's basically in the realm of the private law and not public law. Although there is an exception for the region of Aceh in Indonesia. So, there is an Islamic criminal law applied in that region. But that is quite a specific case, it's a special case. But in most cases, Islamic law only applies in private law matters. Now, to reiterate again what I've said earlier, so Indonesia is not a religious, it's not a state based on any particular religious value, but more of a secular country. Although we do have to acknowledge the heavy influence of Islam in many sectors of the public and private life in Indonesia. So, we have, we have public, so the the most public holidays, the largest number of public holidays that we have in Indonesia are mostly for the Islamic festivities. So, we have a public holiday for Eid Mubarak and then we have also a holiday for Eidul Adha. We also have a holiday for the ascension of the Prophet and so on and so forth. Now, the influences and the influence of Islam in many of the laws in Indonesia is also evident. But this is not exactly a bad thing because, referring to Habemas, there are some, there is some wisdom to be had, there is some good to be had from religious, especially in articulating moral arguments. Because in most cases, it's easier for people to understand moral values from, under religious terms rather than by the letter of the law. Because again, the letter of the law is somewhat technical and not everyone can access it quite easily. And it requires a certain degree of technical mastery to understand the letter of law. So, for example, it's much easier to say that thou shall not kill another person because you will go to hell rather than saying that, people will understand that much easier than saying that you should not kill another person because you will go to jail. People are more terrified over the idea of hell rather than jail in most cases, especially in a rather simpler societies. But again, I guess the problem that is missing is that in Indonesia, the private realm in which religion is most relevant are sometimes conflated with the public life where political, where the political is governed by arguments based on reason and understandable by all people. So, that is something that is still missing in the Indonesian context. So, in many case, conflicts among religious groups arise because of this sort of conflation and confusion. And I guess this is also a critical comment by an Indonesian scholar called the late Bambang Heri Priono. The goal of being, the goal of being religious in the post-secular era is to be a citizen who is confident with one's faith without becoming a tribalist and believing in democracy without becoming a relativist. So, tribalist means that you're not being pigeonholed or chauvinistic about what your own religious belief and seeing other people as enemies, but rather seeing that, well, we're different and we're okay with that. And also believing in the secular values of democracy without becoming relativist or nihilist, like assuming that there are no given ontological values on many ethical imperatives. You shall not kill is not just a matter of, the imperative that you shall not kill is not, should be understood in moral terms and not just in perhaps a utilitarian value. Like some scholars in the field of law and economics would assume something like that. So, that's actually the goal that we need to, well, we in the context of Indonesia need to have in mind, so said Priono. And in another context, also, there are also some suggestions that religions to develop a theology that is in dialogue with each other and also taking into account the local socio-cultural features. So, for example, religions like Chris VI officially acknowledged religion in Indonesia, none of them were born from and developed by the Indonesian culture. Christianity, Islam, Hindu, Buddha and Confucius are all religions from outside of Indonesia. And so, part of the conflict between amongst these religious groups is that they do not particularly talk in same and equal terms. Particularly in the Christian context, there isn't any sort of Indonesian Christian theology, something like that. This is something that the Christian tradition, the Christian theology in Indonesia lacks, which Islam has. So, there are local features, there are local features to be found in the Islam in Indonesia. And that has made this, and that is perhaps one of the reasons why Islam can be the largest religious group in Indonesia because the theology and the theologians develop their religion and the study of their religion in dialogue with and also taking into account the local socio-cultural features found in Indonesia. And that is from the non-legal perspective. And now, what can the law do in light of these realities? So, I refer to Joan Wallace Scott. So, she said that law should be, law should reflect a political discourse which is neutral and perhaps even indifferent to religion in its institutionalization. And this pertains to what I've also raised earlier, one I've raised earlier, that in our national ID, we have to indicate to what religious affiliation we belong to. This supposedly need not happen from the start. There need not be any religious color in someone's ID card. That is one example. But I guess this is still a work in progress, so not necessarily a sort of failure in promoting religious freedom in Indonesia. So, that's just the next step that the Indonesians need to have. By discourse, I mean this is something that discourse is a way that we, that is the way with which we interpret the world. And because we are historical beings, we're not a historical, we're historical beings. That means our values and knowledge also develop from time to time. At some point, slavery was okay, but today slavery is no longer okay. The reason, the reason why it's no longer okay is because we have developed new knowledge, we have developed new values. And we subscribe to them, something which the early generations did not. So, I guess this is also something that the law needs to take into account when deliberating whether or not religion is relevant or not in lawmaking. So, that's that for me. This is the bibliography, if you're interested to find more about it. So, I guess I'll stop here and Dr. Pillai can proceed further.
So, thank you, sir, for giving a brief and crisp idea about Indonesian framework on religious freedom. Thank you. And we will go to Marina, madam. Thereafter, we will take some questions from the participants. Yes, Marina?
Thank you so much. Can you hear me clearly?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you, good evening and good morning for those who are in Brazil right now. Congratulations on your presentation, Mr. Connerius. As kindly said, my name is Marina Muniz. My name is Marina Muniz and I'm a Brazilian lawyer and currently president of Federal University of Bahia's Human Rights Clinic. And I would like to apologize for that layer had a connection problem in the beginning. But first of all, I would like to say it is a pleasure to be present at the International Conference, sharing this session with amazing guests. And I would like to humbly thank Karol Academy Law College and also Dr. Anishwari for the kind invitation. It is an honor to strengthen the ties between our countries. And today, I'm going to discuss with you some aspects concerning religious freedom in Brazil. And please feel free to ask any questions you'd like. So, the preservation of religious freedom is theoretically and practically a fundamental point of great importance, not only to guarantee a basic human right in all communities and space, but also to constitute an aggregating element of society. That said, because religious intolerance is extremely disruptive and can by itself or with other harmful factors generate chaos and stimulate violence. In this sense, the Article 18 of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights of 1948 establishes that everyone has the right to freedom of thought, conscience and religion. everyone has the right to freedom of thought, conscience and religion. And religion is conceptualized and defined as the belief in the existence of a superior supernatural being or principle on which human beings' destiny depends on and to which respect and obedience are obligations. So in a simplified way, religious freedom is the freedom to profess any religion, to carry out codes, traditions related to those beliefs, to manifest themselves in their personal personal life and to be able to live according to those beliefs. Religious freedoms are guaranteed by specific laws which define the religious rights of citizens in each country. And thus, they can be different or treated differently by each country according to its own legislation. And therefore, having that established, let's discuss Brazil. As a country of continental dimensions that has received throughout its history huge contingents of foreigners either to migratory waves related to economic and financial difficulties or due to the atrocity of slavery. Brazil is a melting pot of cultures, languages. And it also, it is also, of course, a territory inhabited by the immense spectrum of religions and beliefs that accompany the people that make up our population, just like in Indonesia. Now you may ask, uh is Brazil a secular country? And opinions differ in this matter. The exhibition of religious Catholic symbols in public buildings, for example, has already been widely debated in Brazil because some some defend the removal of the symbols from these environments, arguing that it does contradict the country's secularism. While others uh believe that the exhibition does not harm Brazil's secularity or religious freedom. And another argument used by people who not do not believe that Brazil is really secular is that our federal constitution cites God as in God in Christianity uh right at the beginning. But despite these controversies, our our legislation is very clear in stating that Brazil cannot manifest religious preferences or even privilege a specific religion according to the Article nineteen of the Brazilian Constitution. And in other words, public power and religion must be separated. And the state, therefore, uh according to the Brazilian legislation, is indeed secular. So a secular state as as Brazil by asserting itself as such is committed to separating state and religion and to protecting religious freedom, guaranteeing the right to all of its citizens. Furthermore, as a secular state, Brazil was not influenced the personal beliefs of its citizens and must not allow religious beliefs of its rulers to have a direct influence on the formulation of public policies. In the sense, the Article number five of the Brazilian Constitution deals specifically with freedom of religion and belief, stating that uh the freedom of conscience and belief is not viable. The free exercise of religious codes being guaranteed in the protection of places of worship and their liturgies guaranteed in accordance to the law. So Brazil is a secular state, not an atheist state, does not prohibit religious practices in its territory. Thus, all religions must be respected and their exercise allowed. And in this context, it is important to look back at our past, and I need to highlight that understanding religious freedom in South America and specifically specifically in Brazil means understanding also the colonization of the region. That because South America was mostly colonized by Portuguese people and Spanish people. Uh in the fifteenth century, the Kingdom of Portugal and the Crown of Castilla, that now is Spain, they signed the Treaty of Torres Vivas, which divided the discovered and undiscovered lands outside Europe between both grounds. And they had the subsequent, the subsequent approval of the Pope Julius the Second in fifteen oh six. Uh thus, the Portuguese and Spanish colonization imposed Christianity in South America, forcing the conversion of indigenous natives uh who had their own religious practices to Catholicism. And another relevant aspect of South American colonization is the fact that Portugal and Spain use the region as exploration colonies, adopting the model of plantations of cultures such as sugarcane. And the expensive colonization model used in the Americas as we know depended directly on the workforce of black Africans trafficked from Africa to America. And like the native indigenous people, enslaved black Africans also had their own religions and were forcibly converted to Catholicism. Also, in Brazil, uh the Portuguese promoted a genocide of the Brazilian indigenous peoples. Uh the diseases brought from Europe, the struggles, the abuses suffered, including the forced conversion to Catholicism. The indigenous people started to enter the territory of the interior of the country while the Portuguese and the entire colonial apparatus remained for centuries concentrated on the Brazilian coast. In this way, over the centuries in Brazilian cities, there were mostly white descendants of Portuguese and black enslaved Africans and their descendants, also enslaved. In such a context, the cultural and religious expressions of blacks were banned by the Portuguese crown in Brazil. So black people received the oppressive treatment of the Catholic Church and of the Portuguese crown with much more intensity. Punishments and torture were encouraged for Africans who insisted on their codes. And it was expressly forbidden to sing and even to pray in the language of origin. So that those individuals were obliged to carry out correspondences between the gods they worshipped and the Catholic religious symbols. And since the Catholic Church was the institutionally dominant religion and since it was it was united with the colonial administration, the Catholic Church tried to control the spread of other codes as well as to impose its sovereignty. However, as religion is an uncomfortable phenomenon from a cultural and social point of view, beliefs were spread anyway. Naturally, uh religions religions emerged from the mixed, the mixing of the most diverse diverse uh types of religions. Since African codes found the Brazilian indigenous codes and over the years, everything has been mixed into diverse and complex manifestations. And advancing a few centuries, Brazil received several migratory contingents. So that nowadays we can observe countless religious matrices in the country. We have Judaism, Catholic Christianity, Protestant Christianity, Cardassian, Spiritist Christianity, Islam, Buddhism, African-based religions landed on the thousands of ships that came here between the fifteen oh oh and the nineteen fifties. The Catholic region is still the majority of the country, despite its sharp decline in the recent years. In nearly a century from eighteen seventy-two to nineteen seventeen, the Catholic population in the country dropped from ninety-nine point seven percent to ninety-one point eight percent. And in the two thousand and tens, the Catholic population came to represent only fifty, only sixty-four point six of the Brazilian, while the Protestant Christianity religion has grown significantly significantly. And in ten years, it went from fifteen point four percent to twenty-two point two percent of the national population. Even this scenario of cultural diversity and with the advent of the secular state, you may think Brazil should be a country in which religions, religious freedom and belief freedom is respected. Turns out that's not true at all. Brazil is not considered a country with significant violations violations of religious freedom in its territory. However, the country is not free from incidents related to their religious intolerance. In a report published uh in two thousand and sixteen uh by the name of Religious Freedom in the World, there is information that between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and fourteen, five hundred and forty-two, forty-three complaints of human rights violations due to religious discrimination were registered on our human rights, human rights hotline, because we have a hotline where we can call and say, hey, there is a human rights violation here. And in two hundred and sixteen of those cases, the complaints informed the victim's religion. And thirty-five percent of those victims were Kandong Black and Umbanda practitioners. Uh Kandong Black and Umbanda are Afro-Brazilian religions. And those cases against individuals who profess Kandong Black and Umbanda became even more significant when we recall that those people represent only zero point three of the Brazilian population. In this context, uh we can ask, well, how about the Inter-American System of Human Rights? Uh the disagreements reached the Inter-American system. And legally, it is important to mention that the rights to freedom of conscience and religion are protected by the American Convention on Human Rights in the term of the Article twelve. And also, the Article twenty-seven of the American Convention expressly determines that these rights cannot be suspended due to states of emergency. Meanwhile, the organs of the Inter-American System have not had the opportunity to pronounce quickly on the protection of said rights of freedom of religion and conscience. Even though experiences of the Inter-American Commission can be pointed out in its reports and recommendations regarding some cases of restriction of these rights in Argentina and Paraguay in the era of the military dictatorships in the last century. And also with respect to the restrictions imposed by Cuba due to the Soviet model that the country adopted. In turn, the Inter-American Board of Human Rights has only had the occasion to pronounce indirectly on the protection of the right of religious freedom on the grounds of two advisory opinions, numbers eight and nine, pronounced in nineteen eighty-seven, that addresses states of emergency. Because as previously indicated, those are some of the rights that cannot be suspended in the states of emergency in the terms of the Article twenty-seven of the American Convention. They tell the Inter-American System shows an evident lack of cases related to the protection of religious freedom. And the management of the organs of the system has been dominated by the resolution of violations related to rights such as life, integrity, judicial guarantees and political rights. In turn, the work of the European System, for example, in matters of religious freedom exceeds in a notable way what has been done by the by the Inter-American System. But despite the absence of further institutional developments in the Inter-American System, the understanding of both European and Inter-American human rights works that freedom of thought, conscience and religion is an element inherent to democratic societies should be highlighted as a meeting point between the two systems. That being said, with regard to the organs of the Inter-American System, uh we can highlight that the activity of the Inter-American Commission of Human Rights, for example, but none of its pronouncements were addressed to Brazil. Plus, it is clear that the growth of religious diversity in Brazil influences the growth of religious intolerances. But despite the importance of the Inter-American System of Human Rights, this can be solved internally without the intervention, the intervention of international organizations. But this task was made difficult by the rise of extremists and religious intolerant politicians such as President Jair Bolsonaro. Since being elected, the Brazilian far-right President Jair Bolsonaro has positioned uh Christian fundamentalists in key positions in his government. He has supported a foreign policy, for example, that seeks a construction of a conservative Christian alliance with politicians such as Donald Trump and Hillary's Victor Obama, for example. In the sense, in uh event at uh at the event in Hungary, the Brazilian Secretary of National Sovereignty and Citizenship Affairs presented the Brazilian government's official vision to the world, saying that Christian religion is now a determining factor in the process of public policy formulation. And regarding uh this, if you've written the news about Brazil every day, it is not hard to spot multiple members of Bolsonaro's government declaring that they are in a Christian crusade against the left, against human rights, against minorities, while defending family values that are actually fundamentalist Christian values. For example, the Foreign Ministry of Human Rights became, under Bolsonaro's administration, the Ministry of Women, Family and Human Rights, conducted by a religious woman called the Maria Salves, that once stated that the state is secular, but I am terribly terribly a Christian. And fundamentalist Christians, they took on first and second level positions, especially in the areas of education, culture, human rights and foreign policy, promoting a cultural cultural war, seeking to rewrite the narrative of Brazil's identity as a Christian nation, which is not true. Also, fundamentalist Christians were elected to the Brazilian Congress composing what we call the Bible bench. And the situation of increase of Christian fundamentalists can be explained by economic crisis. Churches with slogans such as "Stop Suffering", like the Universal Church of the Kingdom of God, uh one of the country's protestant uh dominations, uh which owns inclusive uh which owns the second largest television network in Brazil. Uh so those slogans are examples of how those fundamentalists took advantage of economic crisis and unemployment to expand their faith-based uh business. And the growth of and the imposition of standards contrary to human rights represent back and negative impacts for minorities, especially for women in LGBTQIA+ and concerning freedom of religion and conscience, should also to uh parents of Afro-Brazilian religions who are widely demonized by fundamentalist Christians and who suffer the most violent attacks of religious intolerance and racism. In the past few years, several cases of violence, of violence against uh Afro-Brazilian religions have been recorded. Brazil has even seen the rise of fundamentalist Christian, Christian gangs called the Soldiers of Jesus and groups of drug dealers who adopt their religion and expel non-believers from poor communities that they control. In addition, last year, a Brazilian court awarded the custody of a twelve-year-old girl to her maternal uh godmother, grandmother, sorry, removing the girl from her mother because her mother had supported her daughter's choice to practice an Afro-Brazilian religion. And in August of last year, uh they appealed the decision and the court restored the custody to the mother. But during that year, high-level government officials made public remarks that religious minorities consider uh offensive, of course. And the expansion of conflicts and explosion of intolerance reached such a high degree of intensity that it gave rise to the creation of a law that created the National Day to Combat Religious Intolerance. And the state itself had recognized the problem before the Bolsonaro administration, of course. And the National Day to Combat Religious Intolerance celebrated in January, the twenty-first, in honor of Mother Gilda. Mother Gilda was a religious leader of the Afro-Brazilian Khandaan Black religion, and she was a victim of religious intolerance in the city where I was born, where I currently live, which is Salvador. Mother Gilda had her temple invaded, depredated, and her husband attacked by religious fundamentalists. And not overcoming the trauma of their attacks, she, she died following a heart attack that she had. And January twenty-first marks a milestone in the struggle to respect religious diversity. Although prejudice and religious intolerance are considered crimes in Brazil, occurrences have increased substantially in the last year. And a survey carried out by the Foreign Ministry of Human Rights shows that from January of two thousand and fifteen to the first half of two thousand and seventeen, there were, they registered a complaint of religious intolerance every fifteen hours in Brazil. In this sense, only education, carried out not only in schools, but in homes, in all cities, can make tolerance alive and vibrant with the recognition of a fundamental human right that is already advocated in the Brazilian Constitution. Investment in education and tolerance is essential, essential. And during this period, while investing in the sophistication of education and valuing respect for all beliefs, self-control measures ended up appearing in the criminal sphere, such as the prohibition of religious racism. And I need for its use be brief, and that need only the legally Sorry? Uh, return, they need for excuse. And that only the legal forms in hypothesis of offenses committed and violations are subsumed to the criminal sphere. And maybe awareness of the harmful potential of religious intolerance have the capacity to make possible harmonious coexistence in the midst of racial diversity. And I would like to say thank you so much. It was really an honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Marina, for giving a brief idea about Brazilian framework on religious freedom. And it's very interesting to see that American Convention of Human Rights have significant influence over interpreting religious freedom in your country. So it's very nice to hear. So now let me tell you about the Indian framework on religious freedom. Just I'll share my screen. Yeah, I hope you can see my screen. Are able to see my screen? Okay, yeah. Well. So, we all know religion is a matter of faith or belief. Now, we all know faith or belief is very vital for a human life. Without faith or belief, we cannot live like a human. So it is very essential. So considering this importance of this faith, most of the religion, most, most of the nations have recognized right to religion as a basic right. And you can find international human rights law framework also, wherein UDHR is there, ICCPR is there, and many other international human rights instruments you can find. In all those documents, they were conferring religious freedom as a fundamental human. So generally, if you see the practice among world, among the countries, you can see there are some countries, they are considering, or they themselves identifying as a nation with a particular religion. So like, there are some countries, they are identifying as Christian countries. There are some countries, they are identifying themselves as Islamic countries like that. But some other countries are there, they themselves not identifying in connection with a religion, like India. India is considered as a secular country. So if you go to Indian framework, we can see it is one of the largest democratic country in the world, having a written constitution. Now, this constitution of India, which declares that India is a union of states and it's secular in nature. So you can find it in the preamble itself, though it was ordered later on through an amendment, Indian constitution is talking about secularism. So the country is a secular nest. This is what Indian constitution talks about. Now, you can see one interesting thing. India is a sancom, movie of, movie for different religions. That is a place where large number of religions are there. Like, you can see Hindu, Islam, Christian, Sikhism, Buddhism, Jainism, Swarasthism, all these religions having followers from India. So India having a mixed religion, religious society. Now, if you see the demography, religious demography in India, as per the two thousand and eleven census, seventy-nine point eight percentage is Hindu, Muslim fourteen point two, Christian two point three, Buddhist, Jain, and others two point, then Sikh constitute one point seven. Now this strategic may differ because it's a little old demographic. Now, talking about religious freedom and the legal framework, our law, especially, sorry, our laws, that is concentrated on Indian constitution. Because Indian constitution is the supreme law of the land. So whatever laws are there in India, which is either derived from this constitution or having got recognition from this constitution. So our legal framework is based on Indian constitution. Now, in our Indian constitution, you can find specific references about religious freedom. First of all, in the preamble itself, wherein it says India is a secular democratic country. Then you can see equality of all faith and equal treatment of religions. Now, the term secularism, though it is not specifically defined in our constitution, our constitution uses the term secularism in a way to ensure equality to all faith and equal treatment to all religions. So that is what secularism in our Indian context. Now, coming to other provisions in our constitution. We, we now, in our constitution, we have a set of fundamental rights, which are listed in part three of the constitution. Now, if you see in part three of the constitution of India, Article twenty-five to twenty-eight specifically talks about fundamental right of freedom of religion or declaring freedom of religion as a fundamental right. Then again, Article twenty-nine and thirty, which talks about minority rights protection. There also, the constitution talks protection to religion or religious freedom. Then we have Article thirty, which confers or which validate the various personal laws existing in the country. Now, the significance of personal law is there are certain matters which are personal affairs of individuals, like marriage, succession, inheritance, adoption, custody, etc., which are regulated by their own religion or religious laws. And these laws were accepted by our Indian constitution. As long as these laws were not in conflict with our fundamental rights partner. So by, based on Article thirty, all the religious laws which are governing the personal aspects of an individual, that is also recognized. Then with respect to appointment, generally, while making a public appointment or appointment in a post, you cannot discriminate anybody based on religion. But for ensuring religious protection to religious minorities, Article sixteen clause five specifically grants an exemption. If any religious institution wants to appoint a person belongs to that religion, that is permitted. So these are the basic framework available in India, and I will give you little more details about this. Now, starting from the freedom of religion, fundamental rights, which are guaranteed under Article twenty-five to twenty-eight. Now, starting with Article twenty-five, which is the basic provision, which says all persons are equally entitled to freedom of conscience. And they are freely, they are free to profess, practice, and propagate any religion. So it's a basic fundamental right in our country. Nobody can interfere with it. Now, there is a question here. What is this practice means? Now, whether I have a liberty to do anything, saying that it is there in our religion or it is a part of our belief. No, it is not like that. This article confers fundamental right only to the extent to practice those practices which are essential to a particular religion. Now, there were number of cases came before the court, wherein the issue of what constitute essential religious practice, so that one can legally claim I am eligible to do this practice because my faith allows so, as per Article twenty-five. Now, the cases like, I think one of the first cases, nineteen fifty-four, that case is the Commission of Hindu Religious Endoments, Madras Betschers, uh, etc., versus Sri, Shriram Muth. This is one of the beginning point where what constitute and who can determine which practices are essential to religion. Because our Article twenty-five confers fundamental right to religion, and that fundamental right talks about essential religious practices. Now, this issue has been discussed in number of cases, even very recently in our Indian Young Lawyers Association case, which is popularly known as Shabri Malakis, wherein also this issue was discussed, how to identify essential religious practice. So when one person claims I have a freedom of religion to, or my, my religion provides this thing, this particular practice, and I have a freedom to do that, then the question is whether that practice is essential to your religion. So that essential religious practice test are such been established by judiciary, Indian judiciary, for identifying this. So based on that, earlier they used to see whether religious script used to say like that. Then they used to see what was the practice of the society. Now judiciary will scrutinize. Judiciary is the ultimate authority as of now to say whether a particular practice forms part of a particular religion or not. This is what Article twenty-five, which specifically guarantees freedom of religion. Now, when I'm saying you have a fundamental right to freedom of religion, there are certain restrictions. The government can very well restrict your freedom of religion based on five grounds. One is public order. So in any case, your exercise of freedom of religion will cause any problem with public order. Government can restrict it. Secondly, public morality. So whenever you're practicing, whenever somebody practicing by through practicing the religion, going against the morality, government can restrict it. Then health. If any of your religious practice goes against or affects health, then also government can interfere. So these are three important areas wherein government can legally restrict exercise of religious freedom, which is guaranteed under Article twenty-five. Then, other than these three, there are two more situations wherein government can interfere with religious practice. The condition is, or the circumstances is, for regulating economic, financial, political, and other similar activities. So whenever economic, financial, and political activities are connected with a religious practice, to that extent state can interfere with. Then social welfare and reformation, to improve or to adopt more and more reformations in the country, government can introduce several legislations. So these are the possible circumstances through which one's religious freedom can be restricted in our country. Otherwise, everyone is entitled to claim fundamental right to practice any religion. Now, coming to Article twenty-four, this talks about freedom to manage religious affairs. So every, uh, religious group can establish and maintain their own institutions for religious and other purposes. Now, if you see in India, you can see large number of educational institutions and hospitals being run by religious institutions, and they are doing it based on this particular provision. Then to manage its own affairs, they, they have the right to establish as well as they can manage their affairs, so that government should not unnecessarily interfere with. And they can own property, they can acquire both mobile and immobile property as well as they can administer such property in accordance with it. So being a religious group, they can establish institutions either for their own religion or for any other purpose, and they have all the right to manage their affairs, acquire the property, and administer the property. Again, this right is also conditioned by three limitations. One is public order, second is morality, and health. So based on these three conditions, or any of these three conditions, government can very well interfere with this freedom to manage religious affairs. Now, coming to the next right, that is, freedom as to payment of taxes or promotion of any particular religion, Article twenty-seven. Suppose any particular religion is getting some money, they are exempted from paying tax. So likewise, Article twenty-eight, which talks about freedom as to attendance at religious instructions or religious worship in certain educational institutions. Now, every religion, when they will establish their own institutions, they have the right to have their own religious instructions there, that is also allowed under Article twenty-eight. Then Article twenty-nine, this is very important, this is not only limited to, this is not only limited to religious minorities, but linguistic minorities also. We have number of linguistic minorities, that is based on the language, there are some minority group. So both religious and linguistic minorities, they can also claim a fundamental right to protect their minor, minority affairs. And they can also establish institutions, and they can administer it. And Article thirty very well confers the power to establish and administer education institutions by religious and linguistic minorities. Now, only problem is, when the government, when these minority institutions or religious institutions having the right to administer their own affairs, right to impart religious instructions, one limitation is there. If they are receiving any governmental aid, they were not supposed to compel anybody to participate in that particular religious instructions. If they are purely based on their own funding, if like self-financing, then they have the right to administer this stuff. They have all the right to administer. And they can add their, their own religious instructions. But when it comes to aided or government-funded institutions, they don't have the right. That restriction is up. Now, coming to personal laws. As I said, all these religions prescribe certain laws regarding marriage, succession, inheritance, etc., etc. All these personal laws are considered as valid. And to that extent, uh, our Article thirty very clearly says, as long as these personal laws are not in conflict with the part three of the Indian constitution, these personal laws will continue to have effect. So all the religious laws, whichever is, wherever it is regulating marriage, So all the religious laws, whichever is, wherever it is regulating marriage, succession, inheritance, etcetera, that is having valid. So that is also protected. Then as I said, right to appointment. Any minority institutions can appoint people from their own community. That right is also provided though it is against the general rule, there shall not be any discrimination while making appointment. Now, having said the legal framework in our country, there are some challenges also our, this framework facing us of now. What is the dichotomy between constitutional morality and religious belief? You can find number of cases. I have just cited some examples only here in which the judiciary encountered the issue of religious freedom versus constitutional morality. Our constitution wants to establish an equal society and they want to establish gender justice. But at the same time, if you see the religious ideology, in some of the religion, they have certain provisions which are against gender justice, which are against equality. So in most of the case, this type of issues will come for the discussion before the court. Like Mary Roy versus State of Kerala, this was a case in which the succession right of Christian female was discussed. Because there was a discriminatory provision in the Christian law which is discriminating a female from inheriting some property, a particular sect of Christianity. Then Shabalu Bigam case wherein maintenance was an issue because there are once a Muslim woman divorces or goes for Talak. She was entitled to claim maintenance only for a period of three months. After three months, she was not entitled to them. That is what their religion is. But that was held as unconstitutional and now it is avoided. Then N. Adityan versus Stravankur, here Brahmin community was allowed to be a priest in the temple. But here a non-Brahmin was allowed to do that because of equality. Then Sayarabani the Tripulitalak, the one of the method of divorcing a person, Tripulitalak. That was, though it was considered as a religious idea, but now that is held unconstitutional against our constitution. So likewise, you can see number of cases wherein judiciary has acted very, 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 they have played a very activist role to bring constitutional morality or to enforce constitutional morality even though religions have different viewpoints. But at the same time, there are some other cases wherein the judiciary themselves said they are helpless. They agreed the fact there are discriminatory provisions existing in the religion or religious laws or personal laws. But they said it is the role of legislature to legislate over it. You can see these two important cases, Madhukishwar versus State of Bihar as well as Ahmedabad, Woman Action Group, etcetera. In both the case judiciary said there are discriminatory provisions, number of discriminatory provisions were cited before the court. Court accepted that also, it is discriminatory, but it is not the job of judiciary. It is the job of legislature to make legislations in this regard thereby confirm equal status to men and women. So likewise, you can find number of issues here now. Now, the second problem is essential practice of religion. As I said, when we are saying fundamental right to freedom of religion, your fundamental right to freedom of religion is limited only to or is based on essential practice of religion. Now, what constitute essential practice of religion? Nobody knows and there is no clear answer for it. Then there are some issues in the country where compulsory conversion or conversion based on some coercion either by offering some money, etcetera is also there. There are around ten to fifteen countries, they have already made legislations also and the conversion laws against that. Then the most important problem nowadays we are facing is freedom of speech and expression versus religious belief. People are using their freedom of speech and expression. And when they are using freedom of speech and expression, sometimes the people will say it is hurting their religious sentiments. And you can see number of cases are happening nowadays. The cases like Perimal Murigan's case, even Harish Vasdevan case, all these things are examples. When one person exercises freedom of speech and expression, it will interfere with religious rights of others. So that is another issue. Then finally, one, another issue is atrocities in the name of religion. You can see there are large number of cases from some parts of India where atrocities in the name of religion is being committed by some people. Though the number is less, but still you can find some sort of cases which is being reported in our media which is committed purely in the name of religion. So these are the challenges our religious freedom facing us of now. So that's all from my side. Now the floor is open for discussion. If participants having any, any query or anything to add or any reflection you want to make. You can, this, Mr. Konato is here. I happened to visit Indonesia last year wherein I learned that Indonesia is a country with a ninety-eight percent Shia Muslim population. Am I right, sir?
I don't think it's like ninety-eight percent, it's perhaps it's like eighty-five or ninety percent because yeah, well, the next largest population is, you know, Christians and then, and then yeah, Buddhists and Hindu make a small fraction of, of of the religious groups, but I don't think it's like ninety-eight percent because, because, well, while it's the majority, it's the, it's a, it's a, it's the, the, the largest number of religion, but it's not like ninety-eight percent. I think it's more like nineteen percent.
Okay, fine. So the total population of, I think Hindu, Buddhist, etcetera are somewhere less than five percent.
Interestingly, interestingly, the Hindu population in Indonesia can be divided into two categories. So those who are Indian, so we have also a small Indian population like India, India is, you know, from India, from actual India and, and the Balinese Hindu. So, and I guess the larger, the larger population is the Balinese Hindu because they, they live in Bali. While the Indian Hindu, so like a diasporic Indian, they're just, well, it's a small population.
But I was very much surprised to see your Marbeka Square wherein I could see a statue, a big statue made out of metal in Marbeka Square of Jakarta. Where I was surprised to see it was our Gidobadeshu. I think most of the Indians will know that Gidobadeshu, Krishna and Arjuna standing in a chariot.
Okay.
That was placed in the heart of the city and that way very, I think, ten to fifteen feet length and height, that much bigger statue were placed in a town, that to the major city of Indonesia wherein the Hindu population is just five percent or even less than.
I think it's interesting to note, actually, perhaps the statues that you saw is not exactly a religious symbol like it refers to Hindu. I think it's more, it's referring more to the Japanese culture. So apparently, the, this is, so Mahabharata is from India, right?
Yes, yes.
And then.
We used to say Mahabharat.
Okay, Mahabharat, okay, Mahabharat and then we, we say it in Indonesia, there's this Mahabharata, there's this Ramayana and so on, so forth. And that is being, being retranslated or reinterpreted in a Japanese way. So it's, it's again, it's, it's part of the Indonesian, it's part of the, the ancient Japanese culture. So like I said earlier, many of the religions in Indonesia except for Christian has some local features. The thing about Christianity in Indonesia is that it is, it is, and it's presented in a very Western way. So it, it loses that local flavor, you know? So, well, part of the thing why, why, why there has been conflicts is that, well, why, why there are some conflicts with the Christian population perhaps at, at times mainly because of that, of that sort of presentation or upbringing.
Okay, okay, okay. So now, if there are any questions from the participants, please you can have.
So is this a, a part of, you know, a semester course or something? Is this webinar part of your semester course?
It's like our extra, something extra to our day-to-day classes. So our students will get more understanding about diverse topics.
Okay.
So every semester, every year we used to organize this type of programs.
Okay, that's good, that's good. Well, I myself, actually, my, my background is actually environmental law, but I, I do discuss it from aspects of, you know, political philosophy most of the time. So, well, that, that, that gives a certain versatility for me to at times talk about some areas outside of environmental law.
So I think we have participants, if you have any questions, please. So over to Kober.
Sir.
Yeah, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, Gobi.
Sir, what is your opinion, sir? Whether we Indians can have uniform civil code or we don't need that?
Okay, fine. Let me, let me ask the opinion from other participants. What about in your country? Is there any uniform civil code? Uniform civil code? Yeah, is there any concept like that? I'll tell you what it is. Uniform civil code in the sense, every person in the country having same set of personal like for marriage, for inheritance, for succession, everyone irrespective of their religion, everyone following a particular law. Is it the same in your country or how do?
Well, in Indonesia, we, we do have that, but, but one thing that is interesting about our civil code is that it is adopted from the Dutch colonial law. So it is, it is, it is a product, it's a law product from, from many centuries, from like two centuries ago. That is already outdated in the Netherlands. So the Netherlands, the, the Netherlands now have the new civil code. Civil code that is no longer similar to what we have today. And what is, what is so particularly noteworthy in, in the Indonesian civil code is that there are some, there are some provisions that is particularly colonial. So for example, during the colonial era, there was a categorization of, of civil classes. So there, there was a hierarchy. So it was the, on top of the hierarchy was the Europeans and then the Far Easterns, that is Chinese Indians and Arabs and then the Indonesian natives. Although we do not, we do, we do no longer subscribe to these, to this sort of hierarchy. Apparently, the law was structured in such a way that even without this hierarchy, some disparity, some, some, some conflict may, may, may somehow arise from the adoption of this civil code. The second thing is that today we do not have a official translation of the original Dutch version. So we only have an, an informal translation of the colonial Dutch civil code. This is, and, and as a comparative matter, this civil code is somewhat similar to the present day Roman Dutch law in the South Africa. Well, perhaps because we were both colonialized by, by the Dutch.
Oh, so that's, yeah, what about marine among?
That's interesting because I don't think we have a similar experience here in Brazil. I, I would like to know also examples of the provisions of the civil code. Can you give me examples both in India and Indonesia because I don't think we have similar experience here.
Okay, okay. See, in, when it comes to India, as I said, we have major six religions and all these six religions having their own laws for marriage, succession, inheritance, custody, adoption, maintenance, etcetera. Now, among several states of our country, only one state, that is state of Goa, they, they are having a uniform civil code. So those who are living in Goa, they all having same set of laws. But the rest of the part of India where depend upon the religion, your laws relating to marriage, inheritance, everything will change. Now, our constitution says, Article forty-four very specifically says that government should establish a uniform civil code. But it's only a direction to the government and it's not mandatory. So because of that direction, our government, not government in fact, judiciary in several cases have highlighted the need for having uniform civil code. The reason they have highlighted is because of this disparity in law. There are provisions, some religion provisions are very favorable to women and some provisions the provisions are favorable, not favorable to the women. So likewise, gender discrimination is there and other type of disabilities are there. So because of that disparity and injustices, when comparing same set of like marriage laws in one caste and another religion is different. So because of that, the judiciary has highlighted in certain cases the need for having a uniform civil code. But the problem is since India is a country having large number of, or multi-religion, it is not that easy to come up with a common code. Now, what can be an ideal common code which is acceptable to each and every religion existing in the country? That's a very, very difficult task to answer. Now, whenever the NDA government, the present government will come into the power, people used to argue if they will take any measure for implementing this civil code or adopting a civil code, people used to argue they are trying to impose Hinduism or Hindu law to others. And if other governments are doing, the argument will be they are trying to destroy the Hindu religion or Hindu ideology, something like that. So because of this political, this is connected with this political problem also. So because of this reason, I am sure it is not that easy to adopt a uniform civil code in our country.
Now, is, is, is India a federal country or?
It is a federal country. It's a federal.
Okay, okay.
It's a federal country.
That's interesting because in Brazil since we have a different religious background with the imposition of Christianity and since our population is like vast majority is in fact Christian, we have a civil code that everybody accepts and since the population of, for example, Muslims and people who professes different religions and it's very, very small. It remains like this. It is interesting because you can see the effects of the imposition of a religion in the historical process in the legislation nowadays. This is very interesting.
Yeah. Thank you, Gobi, for the question.
Good evening, sir. One more question, sir. My name is Jobijos. Good evening, ma'am. Good evening, sirs. The question I would like to ask is that even though there is not a uniform civil code, you know, different religions have divisions and subdivisions. Actually, they have many religious practices. How can we streamline or how can we categorize where separate substantive code like that instead of implementing a uniform civil code that is very difficult, the political executive, they won't implement that in that sense. For example, in the US also, when the Trump administration, as ma'am said, you know, he's trying to partisanize that nation. So the other Episcopal churches and they came against that. So in our context and in your, in your countries, how, is there any set of laws or divisions and subdivisions of particular religions? That's my question. Thank you, sir.
Well, in Indonesia, we actually have a, a religious court, but by religious it means only for, for, it's only for Islam. So as, as I mentioned earlier, we have, we, we are a sort of, you know, legally pluralistic legal system. So we have national laws that is, that applies to all people regardless of the religious or ethical backgrounds. And then we have also adult law and that law is, you know, the native or tribal laws. And also there is Islamic law. Now, I guess in a way for the Islamic law, the the application of the law faces a somewhat similar problem to what Dr. Pele depicted in, in, in the Indian case. So for example, there are, there are many religions and so if religion has its own, it has its own law. In the case of Islam, there are many Islams. So. So, so there isn't a single Islamic law. So apparently, well, I'm not, I'm not an Islamic law expert. Well, I only have some faint ideas about it, but, but we did have to take a course, two courses in Islamic law. So introduction to Islamic law and Islamic civil law. We did, we did have to take that course during our legal training. So apparently, there are, there are, there are several different schools of Islamic thought. And all of these schools are present in Indonesia. So unlike in, in, in the Mediterranean and in, in Arab, so each, so for example, when you say Yemen or when you say Syria, it's, it most, it is most likely that they only have one school of Islamic thought. So let's just say in Syria, mostly it is, it is most likely to be Hanafi. In Indonesia, everyone can say I'm a Hanafi, I'm a Hanbali, I'm a Maliki, I'm a... And so there's that, there's, there's, there's that sort of difficulty. And so the sort of Islamic, Islamic law councils, I mean like Islamic, not law, but Islamic council in Indonesia tried to devise a complicated Islamic law. So as to try to make something uniform. But again, despite of this Islamic law compilation, each party can still choose which form of which, which form or which style of Islamic law that they want to apply. Because each school of thought like Hanafi, Hanbali, Maliki and Shafi will have different results in certain areas of, of law. That, that is to the best of my knowledge. Again, I'm not an Islamic expert. To, that's what I, I still remember from, from a course in Islamic law like some years ago. So that's that, that's, that's the case in Indonesia.
Yes, Marina.
I'm learning so much today because our experiences as countries are so different. In Brazil, we used to have some, something like this during the Catholic Inquisition. So during the colonial times, we had something like that. After we became independent from Portugal and we became an empire, our eighteen twenty-four institution said that everything was going to be according the Catholic religion. And so also the law had something to do with the Catholic faith. And but since we became a republic in eighteen eighty-nine, there's not, there's no, no such experience here in Brazil. So I'm learning so much because it's very interesting how different it is from, from my reality. It's very, very different.
Although if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Marina, that Catholic do have this canon law, but that applies only internally within the, you know, Catholic Church. So for example, for example, even when, when, when a Catholic couple in Indonesia wants to have a divorce, they have to appeal directly to the Pope. Someone from Indonesia, yeah, someone from Indonesia that is remotely far away from, from the Vatican, they have to file their appeal to the Pope. Something like that, that's, that's a canon law. And then, and, and interestingly, well, I, well, I did only some, some, you know, fancy reading when I was, when I was a law student. They actually have a quite, quite an extensive body of, of, of literature, of legal literature discussing what this canon law. Even, even, even dating from, 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 from the Inquisition era. And, and there is actually this law, although it just works internally, it's not, it's not something that is properly adopted by, by, by any country. And that's, that's, that's what I know.
Yeah, it's because, for example, a Catholic couple that wants to divorce, they can divorce in Brazilian civil law. And it can stay like that and they can even remarry under Brazilian civil law, but they can't remarry under the Catholic Church law.
Yes.
And mostly the provisions of the, the law are related to those who are participating on the Vatican structure, which means fathers, mothers and this kind of person. I was discussing with a colleague a case of a father that was very, very pro-human rights, pro-LGBT rights. And then he was exonerated from the Catholic Church here in Brazil without a procedure, without the process of law. And this case is being analyzed by Brazilian Superior Court because the laws differ. In the Vatican, it may be okay to do that, but in the Brazilian law, it is not. And so in the end, the Brazilian civil law and the Brazilian constitutional law is applied and not the Catholic law. Even though if you are Catholic, it doesn't matter for the Brazilian state, like we're going to apply our own laws, it's like that.
Okay. But when it comes to India, if you see, we have different religions and among them, different sects are there. Like Islam religion, Shias are there, Sunnis are there. Then again, geography wise or location wise, where they are situated, they are having different type of practices. So there are lot many disparity among the laws applicable to, among these. Suppose if I am saying I am a Hindu, in Hindu itself, you have different, different divisions. So depend upon the place, locality or the culture of that particular state, this law may have difference, different law may have certain disparity or difference. Now, how to solve this difference? How we can make it uniform? At least for all the Christians same law, all the Hindus same law, like then how we can make a, how we can unify it? I am sure it is not the job of government, government can't do it because it's very sensitive. If government will take any measure, that will be politically criticized. It will become a political issue. So government will not venture in it. Only option is, wherever disparity is there, the people belongs to that particular community, they themselves can come forward. And they can think about codifying it, that's the only option. And we cannot imagine judiciary or legislature will interfere with that because it's so sensitive issue. And we are not a good fit person to criticize also whether this sect is practicing good, the other sect is practicing wrong. So it's all depend upon the community who are practicing. Let them come forward and say, see, these are some disparity, we need to codify. So that government will take some measures. I think that's only possible way out.
But, but, but what if, say, the government now recuses itself from, from, you know, this sort of familial affairs? For example, like in, in, in France, like the, the extreme case from our discussion, it really does not regulate anything but, but, but religion. It has no religious content in any of its laws. Even when, when doing a census in, in France, once religious affiliation is not included in the census because it's, it's just irrelevant. It, it does not define, well, in, in, in the French context, it just, it does not define a Frenchness. I, I, I guess if we have so many religions, perhaps also like in the Indonesian case, we have so many religions, I, I guess part of, well, the easiest solution is that, well, we just, the government just, just choose not to regulate that. I guess that's, you know, the easiest and the fastest solution.
Yes, yes. Otherwise it will end in turmoil.
Yeah.
So I think we have reached the end of this session. We have, I think, crossed thirty minutes more. Since we started late, we, I hope the organizers will pardon with us. So over to the Kombel. Hello, Kombel.
Hello, am I audible? Sorry, there was a technical error.
No, time machine, no time machine. So we can conclude. I think we have exceeded our time limit.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so with this, we come to an end to our session. I firmly believe that a special session paved the way for us to gain, gain understanding and insight. Our session was made successful by all of us skilled and equipped person on board sharing and relishing their experiences and studies. I firmly believe that this session paved way for us to understand and insight in human rights and changing facets of religious figure. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Conrado and Cornelius, sir, Marina Muniz Pinto de Carvalho Matos, ma'am, and Dr. Anishvi Pillai, sir, for spending their precious time with us and making this session more informative. We are very honored and privileged to have you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now we are nearing the end of the session.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you was a long.
Thank you very much, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Marina, ma'am, thank you, Konardo.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. See you, see you, bye-bye.
See you, bye-bye.
Bye. We hope we see each other soon.